Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order.
Just a second, Mr. Lester, hold on.
It is the February 20th, 2025, regular meeting of the Olentangie Local School Board of Education. I'll call this meeting to order.
Hold on, it's still not.
We're still, we're working through it, so we'll take our roll call in just a second.
We've done this before.
Once, yeah, once, yeah.
It's really slow for some reason. Okay, I think you're good.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, if you're ready.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Amendments, anything?
Could you, um, could you make one?
I will. All right, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, first of all, welcome, everybody. I always love having people come to the board meetings, especially so many students. I know some of you here for a presentation and some are here maybe for government classes or something like that, but really appreciate you being here and the community members as well. Unfortunately, Ms. Schreiber is not able to be here tonight, as everybody's aware, the flu is going around, so we wish her the best of luck in recuperating as we get through that. I have a couple of things I want to hit in the board president's report tonight. So first of all, as we discussed at our last board meeting, it is budget season. So the governor, as we talked about last time, has hit his initial proposed budget, and then there's going to be continuing discussions over the next, you know, five, six months or so as the legislature works with him on the funding priorities. We talked last time that one of the things that the governor put in his original proposal was fully funding the fair school funding plan, which is a good step. We appreciate that that is a priority for him. One of the challenges, though, is that that plan is really only as good as the data that goes into it, and there's some concerns about the cost sets that are being put into that. And as Mr. Jenkins explained in his treasurer's report last time, that can have a swing of a couple hundred dollars or so per student, which when you have as many students as we have, that's a pretty significant funding swing. Right now, based on the data that they're using, that has a pretty, we're going to be on the lower end if that would continue to hold. So we encourage the community to really be aware of these things, to go out, to learn about what is in the budget, because every dollar we get from the state is one less dollar than we have to give to the local community. And while we are very, very conscious of our responsibility to be good fiscal stewards and work to save money wherever we can, it's a fact of life for public schools that you have to have operating dollars, and that comes from local property taxes, it comes from state funding. So we'll continue to have that discussion with our legislators. We just wanted to stay really a focus for the community as well. The second thing I want to highlight, right now, there are a lot of developments, both at the state and the federal level, around, you know, new guidance or new, you know, laws that are coming out. And, you know, sometimes that feels like it happens really quickly, and people aren't really sure what all that means, right? We, as a district, work very closely with our legal counsel to understand and evaluate these things. These are things that sometimes, as we see new stuff come in, it takes a little bit of time to process and understand. We are really committed, as a district, to communicating about what those changes mean as they come out. I know Mr. Meyer is going to talk a little bit about that in his superintendent's report, especially around Senate Bill 104, which is one of the things that we're managing. We're also going to be looking at any policy impacts that any of this stuff has, so that's going to be coming up through our board policy committee, and we'll have first readings and second readings and all of that sort of stuff. That's kind of the normal machinery of how we, as a district, manage changes in law or guidance or that sort of stuff. What I want to be very, very clear about is that our fundamental value of putting together a safe and supportive and welcoming and inclusive environment for all of our students and families is not going to change. These are the fundamental values of who we are as a school district, and if we don't have a supportive and safe environment for our students, they can't do their best, they can't learn. So we, that is going to be the bedrock of where our values are. We'll continue to have those discussions, but I want to be very, very clear about that. And as we continue to talk about that and communicate with the community, we hope to make that clear. The last thing that I want to note is, as we've really worked, you know, we, as board members, our fundamental responsibility is to stay in touch with the community, to bring the community's views to bear as we are helping to guide the strategic direction of the board. That requires us to stay in touch and to have these sorts of conversations in a lot of different ways. We all go out and talk to folks in different, in different areas. We've tried a lot of different ways to have some of those conversations. One way that, last year around the levy, that we did was have some office hours at public libraries. And so Dr. Dabberco and I, in about a week and a half on March 1st, are going to set up some office hours on, that's a Saturday, from 10 to 12 at the Liberty branch of the Delara County Library. It's the one close to Liberty High School. It's a beautiful library, if you haven't been there. Another's a doughnut store, close by too, which may be a draw for people as well. But we're going to be there from 10 to 12 in Liberty Study Room 4. We'll send this information out, and anybody in the community that wants to come by and just talk with us about your concerns, your thoughts, things like that, we're happy to welcome you there. And then we'll see about having maybe some additional sessions as we go along. So just want to put that out there. I realize I've talked a lot, and I'll wrap up quickly, but in terms of committee updates, we had the mental health committee last night, the Dr. Wallach and I were at, had a really great discussion about all the progress that we've made there over the past couple of years. That's a committee that started about three years ago or so, and really, we spent a lot of time making recommendations about different ways, bringing in community members and their perspectives on ways that we can help to grow our mental health services and improve and make those more efficient. One of the things that I'm really proud to talk about, and we really credit Dr. Barant and Dr. Branson and our well-being department, is we were selected by a group called the JED Foundation to have a two-year partnership with them, where they're going to come in and evaluate our mental health services, help us develop a mental health strategic plan, gather data about all of it, and really put this all together. It is about a $92,000 value, and it is costing us zero dollars, absolutely nothing, to work with them, which is a really amazing thing, and I think will help make our mental health services even better. So that's great. I really, really appreciate the work that, you know, Dr. Brant, you've done and your team has done. And then we just continue to talk about our work to help support specialized populations, like student athletes or, you know, gifted students, that sort of stuff, their special mental health needs. Okay, I've talked a whole lot here. Anything else?
No, I mean, I think you covered it. I'm excited about the, this JED Foundation scenario too, because I think, you know, we're getting, it's basically like an external audit, and, which is really helpful when you have somebody who's not just on the inside looking at what we're doing, but when you get somebody from the outside to come in, you know, to really analyze what we're doing here, and again, to provide the data and metrics that really help us to know if what we're doing is working, or where we're lacking, or anything like that. So I'm very excited about that, too. And it really, I mean, we weren't exactly throwing a party, but it was a lot to celebrate last night, because when we look at what those goals were and how many, you know, boxes you could really check off and say, all that has been accomplished in the last three years, it was a tremendous amount. It was the vast majority, I think, of the goals that were set were really accomplished or ongoing. So, kudos.
That's great. I know facilities was prior to the last meeting. Was there another meeting? Was there finance, not at home?
We had a finance and audit meeting about two weeks ago, where we covered the ACFER and the PAFER.
Which, for those in the audience who don't have those memorized, are?
Our annual financial report for the 2324 school year, and then the PAFER is a condensed and more user and community-friendly version of the same, and this report would have been what was mailed recently to all of the residents throughout the district.
So those of you that are residents in the, you know, the Delta District that got this, the PAFER is a, really a wonderful document. It lays out all of our financial operations. It's clear, it's concise, it's understandable. For those of you, their kids in the audience, ask your parents to give it to you and share it with you. It's a really great document, and it's, a lot of work goes in, and Ms. Davis's team did a lot of wonderful work with you all as well, so really want to recognize that.
Yes.
Oh, I just have something else. Not a, not committee-specific, but last week, I was able to attend the Ohio Ed Tech Conference downtown, and there was, and our tech department was represented there, continuing their education as well as presenting and showcasing some really cool uses of instructional technology here in the district. So thank you to the district for showing up like that.
That's great. Okay, anything else? Good, all right, then we are going to move to our first presentation, the Olentangie High School DECA program. So I look forward to hearing about it.
My name is Eric Wells. I'm the advisor at Olentangie High School's DECA program and the marketing teacher there. Give you a little bit of background of what DECA is. DECA is the co-curricular student organization for students interested in careers in business. Students, to be involved in DECA, students have to be involved in a ACT program, career type program. Over the last 16 years, programs got revamped a little bit here and there, to the point where we're now pretty much 100% project-based. All of my students are doing projects with local businesses, doing things within the school, within the community. Over the last 16 years, I've had groups that have worked with the district in a variety of different ways, going back to a group that worked with the Project 2020 group that looked at the need for a fourth high school. I've had groups that have worked with the district for dual enrollment. I've had groups that worked in 2019 with the reason why we have all the vape detectors and, in all the middle schools and high schools. And six years ago, had a group that did a presentation just like tonight, and sitting behind the district leadership team, and they're talking about FINSTA accounts, and you see a couple of the district leadership team, you know, kind of conversating back and forth with one another about what's FINSTA? Well, fake Instagram accounts, which they found out about in a few more minutes there. Then COVID hit and kind of wiped some things out, and now it's nice to be able to get back together with, with the district and doing some different projects there. With the last two years, being involved with BridgeEd and having that, trying to get that motivated and getting that rolling in the right direction, had a group this year that's taken on our career development project, and they've worked with BridgeEd, they've worked with Molly Preston, and with the help and guidance of Nicole Cruthers, our building principal. They've been able to do a lot, they've been able to do a lot of different things over the last few months, and that's what they're going to share with you guys tonight. So Laney, Josie, Elena, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Elena Smith.
I'm Laney Ramsayer.
And I'm Josie Altieri.
And today, we're going to share with you our DECA project, Find Your Fit. So our DECA project is a career development project, and these were the guidelines given to us. We took these guidelines and we applied them to problems that we saw in our own school.
So we began with our secondary research first to get a sort of baseline of what issue that we're facing. So we used a few reliable sources, such as Brookings and Goodwin University, and we found that many people are misinformed by their communities about career routes and options that are available to them. And for more specific information, we surveyed students from our school and parents of Olentangie students, and just to hear their personal thoughts and experiences.
Shifting over to the planning aspect, we wanted to provide opportunities for students that are unsure about their future paths following high school, as well as communicate information to unsure students. Lastly, our executions. We held a Career Connection series, as well as created a college business website, and then lastly, we presented at Liberty Middle School for their Career Exploration Day and talked about DECA and the business world.
Okay, so, these are some of our survey results. So we found that 63% of parents, Olentangie parents, doubt their child's success without going to college, and 1/3 of students feel parental pressure to attend college. So this gives very little room for kids to explore any alternate routes that may be a better option for them. And only 6% of students have received career guidance, they feel that they've received career guidance from Olentangie, and then only 2% have heard of BridgeEd, which is obviously holding them back from all the amazing opportunities that they have available working with many different businesses and organizations.
By partnering with BridgeEd, we got the opportunity to hold the event, the Career Connection Series. This series was held during our flex periods, which is on Wednesdays, and we brought different businesses in to present to our students, and they shared things about their company along with opportunities that their company can provide for our students.
So this is the outcome of our event. So we have pictures from De La Russo Real Estate Agent Company, OSU Wexner Medical Center, and also Columbus State Presentation. We also included pictures of how we promoted this event through our social media, and due to the high interest, we extended our series another four weeks, allowing us to conclude our series on the 29th of January with the co-owners of BridgeEd. Through this event, we were able to give students mentorship, internship, and field trip opportun, opportunities.
We also found with our survey that 93% of students at Olentangie are planning on attending college, and there's still very limited resources given that aid them in actually choosing a college and going about choosing a college. So that's why we created our college business program website, and this, this is because business is typically one of the majors with the most interest for students.
So we surveyed business program students from the colleges below, and here are some examples of survey questions we asked.
The reason we created this website was obviously for the kids who are set on attending college so that they can make a more educated decision on a college that best fits their wants and needs. And this also gives students a more honest and reliable tool to discover specific programs because it's coming from students that are actually attending, so that they can feel more confident in their college decisions.
The final event that we attended was the Career Exploration Day at Liberty Middle School. We came in, we presented to the seventh graders about what DECA is, along with business classes that Olentangie offers. Our goal for this was to educate middle schoolers on career readiness. Thank you.
Right, any questions for the group? So, one thing I'll note is, this is real, so I work in higher education, and what we see too often are people that get to college, and then they sort of meander a bit, right? And it takes them a lot longer to graduate and to get onto their career, because they're not quite sure what they want to do. And so there's been a big push over the past 10 years or so to start to help, you don't want people to feel like they have to decide their career in the seventh grade, right? But you want them to at least understand, do I like this, do I not like this? What does this look like? What doesn't this look like? And the more information you can get people about that, the better, you know, the better choices they're going to be able to make. And sometimes people still, you know, decide, oh, I want to switch or whatever. But you want them to be armed with that stuff as early as possible. So being really thoughtful, asking these questions, how do we make these connections? I mean, this is where this stuff falls apart sometimes, is you just don't have that right connection. And so finding those, those ways, being really curious about it, and then taking steps and introducing it to, you know, to your peers three or four years behind you, that's great, right? You're really building that pipeline, and that, that's so effective. So I, you know, I really want to congratulate you on this work, and I really want to congratulate you, not just on the work itself, but on the thoughtfulness that went, that went into it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent's report.
So, as a former DECA teacher, and I told them way back in 1991, they looked at me like I was very stupid in 1991, but great job on the presentation. So competition, where are we in level of competition? District, on the way to, so states and then nationals. Nationals this year is in Orlando, that's what you told me? Well, good luck, so thank you for your work. All right, well, welcome, everyone. A few things I want to highlight this evening. One is our third professional development day of the year was February 14th. So you can see some pictures there, but I know I have representatives in the curriculum department, so I do want to commend them on their continued work and focus, and how intentional we are with our professional development, development opportunities that we provide for our staff. I actually spent about an hour and a half over at Olentangie High School on February 14th with our high school staff, and attended three or four different sessions, and, and very, very engaged, but one I just want to mention, we had in the auditorium, members of my superintendent advisory, which are students across our four high schools. I think two of the high schools were represented there on the panel, but had a student panel, I think about 200 high school teachers attended, and it was just very genuine and authentic dialogue back and forth with teachers, asking students questions about their experience in school. Experiences everywhere from challenging courses, courses where they just like to take based on passion and based on interest, rigor of the courses, stress, anxiety, cell phones even came up, but really, really great to be there and observe that conversation. Just after each professional development, we do survey staff. So one thing I want to highlight, today I found at least one strategy or tool that I was able to implement in my classroom or practice, because that's effective professional development, where you're able to take something from what you learn and then obviously apply it in your classroom. So 95.1% of our staff agreed with that question. So again, good job to our curriculum department, and thanks to our staff for continually learning. And at the last board meeting, we heard a presentation from some of our middle school ELA teachers, and it's very, very evident here at Olentangie. Also, want to congratulate Mr. Kevin Ball, one of our transportation drivers, and you've seen his name come across many board meetings as the state rodeo champion. He was nominated by Dr. Fede for the RISE Award, so he was selected as one of two in the state, receiving this award. Inspirational School Employees Award goes to two classified members across the state of Ohio. So Odoo was here and surprised him at our driver professional development on the same day, where he received his award, and then also advanced to the national level where he's a top-five finalist. So extremely proud of Kevin and for him being recognized, you know, not only by staff, but also parents and students of who he transports each and every day. When I, when they asked me, I described him in one word, humble, humility is, is how I describe Kevin, because he shows up to provide the best service that he can for our students and families, and really does not want credit for it. Okay, congratulations to high school performing arts students, named to all-state in orchestra, band, and choir, so you can see all four high schools represented there, and students who have received all-state honor, so want to congratulate those students in our performing arts across our four high schools. As Mr. Lester said, I want to give a final update to the board on Senate Bill 104. Senate Bill 104 is the bathroom bill, which goes into law, goes into effect next week on February 25th, mandating all schools designate restrooms, locker rooms, and similar facilities based on individuals' biological sex as defined in the legislation. So things that we've done proactively to address this transition, we met with principals, athletic directors, and school counselors to ensure that they fully understand the legal directives and the district's expectations for implementation, and then also having conversations on how we can work with students and families through this transition. So building administrators engaged in discussions with impacted students and families to address their individual concerns, explore available accommodations, and reinforce the district's commitment to fostering a respectful and inclusive school environment within the framework of the law, as, Mr. Lester, you mentioned in your board president report. Single occupancy restrooms, staff or family will be clearly labeled in all of our buildings along with our boys and girls restrooms, as, as far as the single-use occupancy restrooms. So that's how they'll be labeled in every one of our buildings. The legislation also impacts overnight and out-of-state field trips, so we will continue to work with students, families, and coaches and advisors as needed, but also wanted to point out an updated FAQ that will be available on our district website that answers some questions that parents and students may have, but our school personnel are well-equipped in our buildings to have these conversations with students and families. But I wanted to give one final update to the board as this law goes into effect next Tuesday, February 25th.
And I just want to highlight two things on this. First of all, I want to, I really appreciate the work, not just meeting with the principals and all those hooks, but actually talking to the impacted families, right? That's very important, that we, we sit down and really work to understand the impact and to understand the secondary and tertiary impacts and provide support that we can. I do just want to be clear about this, so that it's, it's understandable, that this, this bill does not impact the use of single occupancy restrooms. Anyone can use a single occupancy restroom, and we have those in all of our schools.
Correct, correct, absolutely. So, so as we move forward, like you said, we've had those conversations, and we plan to move forward next week. Superintendent action items, so approved administrative employment. So we have two administrative employment recommendations. Melissa Abramovitz, who is being promoted to Technology Service Desk Supervisor, and Lorraine Yabara, who will be joining us as a mental health specialist. Both these positions are replacement positions from resignations that we've had in the last couple of months. I'll have certified action items as recommendations and do want to, we have one retirement, Julie Leonard, who is a longtime employee, she's a library aide at Olentangie High School. Actually, when I was the principal, or Orange High School, when I was the principal at Orange High School, I hired Julie way back when, so she will be leaving us with 17 years of service to Olentangie School, so want to wish her the best in retirement. Also have a list of student overnight and out-of-state field trips, and then one business management item on the agenda, recommend acceptance of the bid and approval to enter in the contract with Capital Aluminum and Glass Corporation in the amount of $705,000 for district window replacements. Again, this is part of our capital plan. Each year, we're selecting certain buildings to do window replacements because they need replaced, and this year, five buildings will have window replacements wind out run. Allen Creek Elementary, Arrowhead Elementary, Cedar Ridge, and OHS, which if, when reading through the list, some of our oldest elementary schools, and obviously oldest high school. So coming up, important dates, want to highlight, next week, state of the schools, so that'll be Wednesday, February 26th, at Olentangie High School, from 6:00 to 7:30. And also want to point out the last day to submit feedback on the 26, 27 district calendar. A few meetings ago, Dr. Fede presented to the board, we've put that out, but there's the, Friday, February 28th will be the last day to submit feedback, and then we, as a district, will look at that feedback and will bring back that information to present to the board. And then next meeting, right here, Thursday, March to present to the board. And then next meeting, right here, Thursday, March 13th, at 6:30. We're approaching spring break. Winter's almost over.
Did somebody say yes? Yeah, probably some requests for snow days before then, we'll see. All right, any questions for Mr. Meyer? All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, is this when you talk about free vending machines?
This is when
Free vending machines?
I talk about many things that I'm the one who actually calls off school.
Closing school.
Jenkins, you cleared the room.
Yeah. You're still sleeping when we make that call.
I don't. Well done, scholar.
Huzzah.
Is that one of his graduation?
Yeah, I don't blame you. I'd go too. Thank you, board members. Just have a few brief items tonight. Wanted to talk about our latest piece of good news. As a district, we've talked about the fact that we are doing a bond refunding, for lack of a better word. That's like getting a new mortgage on your home, refinancing. When you do that, you get a, what's called a credit rating, an institutional credit rating. We do ours with S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's, and our credit rating was a triple A rating, which is the highest tier of credit that you can get from S&amp;P. It also has a stable outlook. So, the comparison that I would give here is before you buy a home, before you might want to borrow money to pay for a car, most individuals are aware of something either called their beacon or FICO score. The higher that score is, I think it goes up to a scale of 900, so if your scale is 750 or higher, you are noted as having exceptional credit, and that will allow your overall borrowing costs in the terms of what you pay in interest rates to be much, much lower. This is the same thing with institutions or businesses or any organization. A triple A rating reflects the highest credit worthiness for the Olentangy schools. That will create for us in any future borrowings, including the borrowing we're currently doing to refund a borrowing, that we get the lowest interest rates possible that the market would have to offer when we go out to bid for those kinds of things. It's reflecting consistently positive operating results and a robust reserve position. We know we have increasing costs in the coming years in our five-year forecast and our financial statements, but it was, this is taken obviously from their report, which is why it's italicized, but experienced management in the district and revenue raising flexibility, they believe it allows to support those potential growing pains. We know, and we've talked a lot, Mr. Meyer and I, about 7,000 homes that are currently in some phase of development, you know, whether shovels are turning or whether it's just platted ground. We know those 7,000 homes lead to about 5,500 students that we are expecting over the next five to 10 years. The rating also is reflecting positive financial results over the last four consecutive years, a thorough and experienced management team, and then finally, a manageable debt profile. Our current debts are only about 10.4% of revenue. So, great news that we have, as noted, the highest credit worthiness that can possibly be attained through Standard and Poor's. Wanted to kind of keep in front of our community, Mr. Lester had mentioned earlier about the budget bill process. The budget bill has a number. It's House Bill 96. If you can remember, the last time I talked about it, it seems counterintuitive. It should be one, but it's not. It's 96. So, we've highlighted and read where we are right now. The House has the bill. In fact, the Senate, beg your pardon, the House Education Committee, next Tuesday and Wednesday. We plan to be there. Mr. Meyer, if you didn't know it, you do now. We're going to go down one of those two days, and we're going to testify to the Senate Committee, I keep saying Senate, House Committee. It obviously starts in the House. My guess would be, based on some conversations that Mr. Meyer and I have already had, the House would expect probably to turn this around and send it to the, send it to the Senate, 1st of April. The Senate feels pretty confident that they can get it, their work done by the middle of May, so that we can then come down the stretch for about a three-to-six-week process for the conference committee, assuming that they don't have perfect harmony, which they obviously never do. So, we wanted to keep this slide in front of our community as a continual reminder of what we're talking with our legislators about. What can our community do? Mr. Lester mentioned earlier, every dollar we get from the state is one less dollar that we have to raise locally. We can ask our legislature to continue to adjust the cost inputs, but certainly nothing less than 3% per year. In the current version of the funding formula, as was noted earlier, they're using 2022 cost inputs. So, we're already starting to make our case with the different legislators that that is something that has to be adjusted. We shall see whether that trigger is actually pulled or if it's left alone. We are asking for full phase in, good news. Second bullet point right now is in the governor's version, it's in the House's version. What that means is that currently, we are getting about 2/3 of the increase that we were supposed to get over the 2020 school year. Next year, it'll go to 83 1/3%, and the following year, it'll be fully funded. That is a key component that we're pleased to say is still in the formula. But the last one is probably, on top of the cost sets, the most impactful. Right now, the formula, when it is all said and done, only guarantees 10% of base costs. That's a start. You know, we're pleased. It's not five, which it was in the previous biennium, but we need it to be 20. We've done some math. We've provided it to our legislators. It needs to be at least 15 to 20% to be sure that we get, as a district, at least as much as we've talked, that number around $1,400 or $1,500 that a private school student gets in public dollars for that private school, for administrative, and also for auxiliary funding. So, we believe that we offer a very high-quality public education, and our general mantra has been, you know, at least fund us at the same level of the public dollars that would follow a student to a private school. Questions? Finally, we're starting a new thing. It's a fancy word. No, but very appreciative of the communications department. Thank you, Olentangy, and we're going to start talking about your tax dollars at use and how Olentangy Schools is constantly working to wisely use resources or to get more resources. And so, tonight is a did you know? Have you ever looked at your cell phone bill, or maybe your internet bill, and down in the fine print, have you ever seen a little thing that says USF tax? Well, we're going to learn what that's about tonight. There is a federal program actually run by a nonprofit called the United, sorry, the Universal Service Administrative Company. It's abbreviated USAC, and it's overseen by the FCC. USAC is a entity that puts that USF, which stands for universal service fee, on all communications devices, internet hookups, and that little bitty tax, I think I looked at mine, it's, you know, a couple bucks a month. That allows the federal government, through E-Rate, to heavily subsidize the telecommunications that are used by schools and libraries, and by telecommunications, I'm going to widely paint the brushstrokes of, internet, and back in the old days when we had old potslines and telephones, which we don't have anymore, but now it would cover voice-over IP. It would also cover network equipment. In our case, for Olentangy Schools, our reimbursements are 40%. We can get either technological equipment or services. Both can have reimbursements attached to them. So, here's the, for instance, of what we've done this year. Worked very heavily with Mr. Sexton and the instructional tech folks and the tech folks to do E-Rate for funding year '24. So, if we don't have enough confusion, we have calendar years, we have fiscal years, and then the federal government steps in and has a totally different year. So, even though we're in fiscal year 2025, we're right now in E-Rate year 2024. Don't ask me why, I don't know. So, for this year, we spent last year about $5.7 million on technology leases, so that our students have the most up-to-date, our staff has the most up-to-date technological equipment. We filed the forms, and it would just be a matter of invoicing at some point in time, USAC, and we expect to get, we have what's called a funding commitment decision letter for $2.3 million in a reimbursement that will be coming back on our purchases for this year. Additionally, if you look at what we spent on the internet services side, our internet connection is mostly through Meta. Those costs are about $336,000, and we expect to get back about $130,256 on those services. So, this is, again, something that is available to all schools, but you have to do the work. You have to be diligent. There's a bidding process to award the contracts. You have to work with the federal government, which in and of itself is always a fun thing to do, but hopefully, this slide shows that we're doing everything we can to maximize the funding stream that we get and manage our assets wisely as a district. So, any questions about those items? Finally, the treasurer action items. The first four bullet points will be considered as a consent agenda. The last item is standalone. That has to happen by law. So, we will be considering as one single motion and then action, the recommendation of the board minutes from February 7th, the approval of a donation of $400 from Grand Canyon Education to the Academy, the acceptance of the January 2025 monthly financials, and the FY25 updated appropriations. Then, as noted, there is a standalone set of resolutions for the most recent slate of Board of Revision complaints that we want to authorize our legal counsel to file on the district's behalf. I will entertain any questions or comments?
Just to be clear about this, on that last piece, and we've talked about this, and these are things that come to us over time, but I always think it's a good opportunity to educate the community, because this is also an example of us trying to do the best we can for the community in terms of maximized dollars. Can you just speak very briefly about what the purpose of this is?
So, a Board of Revision complaint or the process, I use the word complaint, countercomplaint. They sound, you know, dirty, but they're, at the end of the day, they're just legal terms. So, if you're an attorney, that's what you do is complain. So, anyway, what happens in a BOR complaint is we look at different property values throughout our community, and so that the owner of a residential home does not have more of their proportionate share of the tax burden than what they should have, we are always interested in making sure that the value of properties in the district are appropriate. In many cases, you may get a scenario where a home or a property, and that would be what all of these complaints are based on, a, let me take a step back, because we don't file on homes, we don't file on residential, but where a business or an industry would have a recent arms-linked transaction sale that is markedly above what the current value is, we're interested in finding out, you know, why, where, what, and how, and certainly, if an increase in value is warranted, then that needs to take place. Again, this is not to punish or go after anybody. It is just making sure that the true value of property throughout the district is distributed the way that it should be. So, all of these will be resolutions where we have found properties around the district that have had a recent arms-linked transaction market, what appears to be a fully market value sale. But if you look at the auditor's website, at the assessed or taxable value of that property, it's, and we're not talking just, you know, a few dollars. We're talking half a million dollars or more of delta between the value and the sale value. So, again, this keeps everybody's, at the end of the day, this keeps everybody's tax bill proportionately where it's supposed to be.
And again, it's all commercial properties.
That is correct. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, in my example, I said home. We only file, we take this so seriously, if you remember, we passed a policy. I think it's 6225. So, that policy is there for any of our community members to see, and it outlines all of the different things that have to happen before we even take this approach.
Do I remember seeing more in previous meetings? There's only 20 on this list of properties. It seems like in years past, there was like, you know, dot matrix printups of these extensive lists of properties. That's
We had an exceptionally large one last year. When I say exceptionally large, there was a apartment complex, which is commercial, that, for lack of a better word, turned almost 80 units into a condominium, 80 different condominiums, and when it sold, you have to, because of the law, you have to list every single residence. And so, it was exceptionally large. The other reason it would have been large a year or two ago, it was on the 2023 taxable value, which was a complete reappraisal year. You'll always have more activity in a reappraisal year. We're right now kind of in the two plateau years. We had a reappraisal in 2023. For the most part, all values in the district stay static for 2024 and '25. And then in '26, there'll be what's called a triennial update. So, you'll have, if you look at real estate patterns, you'll have an increase and then flat two years, and then you'll have an increase and then flat two years. And so, we're in one of those plateau years.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
And I, unless there's one floating around, I do not have any request for public participation.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, we will then move to the consent action items, move down here. So, the treasurer consent action items. Mr. Jenkins, if you might present those.
Yes, board members, as mentioned in the presentation, I'm asking you to move on and consider by one single action, 10A, recommending approval of the board meeting minutes from February 7th, B, approval of the noted donations, C, the acceptance of our January 2025 monthly financials, and then finally, D, our updated appropriations for fiscal year 2025. Again, all of these are being presented and recommended as one single action item, unless someone would like to pull one out and discuss it separately.
Anyone like to discuss any of these separately? All right, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve them as one slate of action items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, and then the separate treasurer action item.
Yes, as noted, these are the resolutions that I'm asking for us to authorize legal counsel to file on behalf of the district.
All right, can I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
A second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Jenkins?
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent consent action items.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Board members, I recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items, A through G. A, specific human resource items administrative. B, specific human resource items certified. C, specific human resource items supplementals. D, specific human resource items classified. E, specific human resource items classified substitutes. F, recommend approval of student overnight and out-of-state field trips. G, recommend approval for business management and facility items, and again, this is for the window replacements. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action and vote unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
All right, anyone like to discuss any of these separately? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve as a full slate?
Sure, so moved.
A second? I'll second it. Again, any discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 12122G1, to discuss the employment or compensation of a public employee. to discuss the employment or compensation of a public employee. I'll note that we will only be returning to adjourn after this, we will not be taking any substantive action. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, we're into executive session. You all can go. You don't have to, you don't have to wait for us.
Senior.
Senior, what are you gonna do after school?
Go to Kenyon.
Nice, very cool, that's great.
What do you want to study?
History.
And what are you gonna do with that? You want to teach at a higher level, good for you. What's your favorite area, it's my last question.
Probably American and European areas.
Love it, good for you.
That's awesome.
Good for you.
All right, are we ready? Okay, it is 7:58 and we are coming back into open session. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
That was quick.
Any discussion? Where are you guys on the other motions?
Guys are jumping on that one.
Any discussion? Right, hearing none, I will take down the rocks, Mr. Jaggs is gone. So it was Dabricko and Wallach. Dr. Dabricko.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
And Mr. Lester. Yes, all right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good luck, Martin.
What was that in, was that some audit? What was the thing that you're listed as Dr. Kevin O'Brien?
Did you see that?
Yeah.
I was like, you go Kevin, look at your PhD. In the thing that comes from the auditor's office, it lists the board.